Good evening. The time is 6:00 PM. It is Tuesday, May the 28th, 2024. And we are in the administrative building, calling the word of this meeting of the Lewis County Board of Education. Mrs. Bonnet, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will conduct a public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. It's been posted at various places. Hearing no comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Stewart, are there any agenda adjustments?
There are none, Madam President.
All right. At this time, we will have our personnel achievement and recognition of our 2023-2024 retirees. We want to say thank you, say it's sad to see you go, but we're happy that you've reached this milestone and wish you all the best. And Dr. Stewart, I'll turn it over to you.
So first up is Ellen Jones, Roger Fleischer, Jane Horn, Joyce Rains, Sandra Luer, Janice Collins, Gerald Paul, Pamela Tucker, Sandy Post, Scott Butcher, Teresa Blend, and Melinda Drummond.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Teachers and Service Personnel of the Year.
If there are principals in the building, if they would come up? So from Jane Louu Elementary, Teacher of the Year was Kendall Keplinger. Service Personnel at Jane Louu was Kimberly Turner. Leading Creek Elementary, Teacher of the Year, Kimberly Bonnet. And Service Personnel of the Year was Samantha Smith. Lewis County High School, Teacher of the Year, Leslie White. And Service Personnel of the Year, Jamie Pratt. Peterson Central?
Amanda Young here. And Ms. Julie Williams.
Royal High Elementary, our Teacher of the Year was Ms. Hannah Belt. And our Service Personnel of the Year was Heather Thorne.
Ms. Holcomb, would you do the honors for the candidates or for Robert O'Glan? Please, please, please.
For Service Personnel, we had Melinda Nicholson. And for Teacher of the Year, Michelle Benson. And Service Personnel of the Year from Transportation Department, Chris Herrick. All right. So now our Service Person of the Year as the county winner was Heather Thorne.
Heather, if you'll wait just one minute.
Oh, sorry. And then Teacher of the Year, County Winner, Leslie White.
Congratulations to all of you and thank you for your hard work and dedication. Next, we have Buster the Bus.
Yes, Mr. Kraft and Mr. Lewis have worked a lot of hours involving a number of people in our community and folks here at the central office, and were able to secure enough monies to be able to purchase Buster the Bus.
Buster the Bus.
Flat tires.
What you're looking at is the newest train made in Lewis County Bus Departments. Arsenal of tools here. We, Brett and I went to a training two years ago, got here about Buster. Came back, talked to Mr. Paul about it, our supervisor, and this has taken a year and a half's worth of work. Buster was bought through grants, through private contributions. And if you would look on my desk up to Transportation Department, the file is only this thick on grants and everything. Buster would like to thank you. You're welcome, Buster. We can take Buster starting in the daycare centers, the ones moving up where they're riding buses. We can take him into the schools, the safety fairs and everything. He actually has worked in the lights. Buster, how far should he be away from the bus? Does anybody have any questions for Buster? He's running. I know you want to hear it for life.
I told you I get to drive him. Mr. Kraft, what's on his windshield wipers?
Windshield wipers, if you can, if not windshield wipers, but his eyes move back and forth watching. He can close both of them. He's got a few sound effects, shall we say? And I know Dr. Stewart's not happy with ordering one thing on Buster. Buster could also be equipped with a water squirter in front. The day he commenced, she was a little disappointed that it didn't work because she was used to getting sprayed down another cap.
I'll make the motion.
I'm afraid you're not conducting the meeting, Buster. Thank you. We will put your permission on another agenda. No student discipline this evening?
No, ma'am.
Academics? All right. We have delegations, and we have some things that we need to go over here as I see what we have listed. We can, a delegation is when an employer or member of the public may make the board members aware of an issue. Our policy requests each delegation to have attempted to resolve the issue through the chain of command and administration before coming as a delegation. Our county policy, which works in conjunction with state law, provides the following important info regarding delegations. You may speak for five minutes, dependent upon the number of delegations. We do have a timekeeper. For a group presentation or delegations regarding the same topic, you must select one spokesperson. Others may only interject when recognized by the board president. You may only speak to the board. You may not engage in an honorable conversation with any member of the audience. Disorderly conduct, profanity, or disrespectful comments will result in a recess of the meeting and an end of your opportunity to speak. We are only allowed to listen. We do not make decisions or answer questions. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it's not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers must be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you're unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. If we, if during the course of your comments as a delegation, you're going to speak to a specific student or member of the staff, then we need to go into executive session for that delegation set of comments. So our first one of this evening is Charles Garrison. Do we require an executive session, sir?
No, I just wanted to approach the board and bring to your attention that a fellow parent of my student. I'm Charles Garrison. I am the father of Charles, of Cooper Garrison. This text, this, hey lady, is this your sister? It shows a picture of my child. This was sent to my sister-in-law, trying to elicit information about my juvenile child. I'm not happy about this. If anybody wishes to contact me about my child or any other problem or issue at the school, please contact me. You all have my information, right, y'all? Everybody has it, right? Don't contact my family, please. Nobody. This is wrong. This is wrong. You don't know the dynamics of my family. Nobody does. Thank you for your time. This was such a wonderful meeting, and I hated to have to get up here and say this to you, to wonderful people. And I love my school, and I love my child, and nobody's going to want to transform my child or hurt my child. I will get an attorney. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next, we have Samantha Rapirio Matos. Do we need to go into executive session?
So first of all, I want to say I had asked to be put on the agenda so that I could elicit answers, and was told that the board was not willing to allow that to happen. So I do want to say as a parent and a taxpayer, that's really unfortunate and disheartening that that wouldn't have been allowed. So I had questions. I was looking over the proposed policies, and part of the policy in there is that students can be disciplined for things that happen outside of the school environment. So it discusses that if they make posts on social media or things like that, that those can be handled and disciplined within the school system, even if they're, you know, not on school property, not at a school event, you know, not not on school property like tablets or anything like that. But then during an IEP meeting, when I talked about some things that had happened with my children, I was told that the videos from the classrooms are not allowed to be used as disciplinary to discipline or any evaluation or anything for teachers. So I just am really concerned at the fact that the county believes that they can police what happens in people's homes when people post stuff on social media and things like that from their home, from their devices that they pay for. But the videos that are maintained by the Board of Education cannot be used to evaluate or discipline teachers or staff. And especially in the special needs setting of a self-contained classroom, the reason that they have those cameras is because most of those kids aren't able to express what's happening. So they can't file a complaint on their teacher or the staff member for doing wrong or putting hands on them or whatever the case may be. So if you can't use those videos that you maintain to discipline your staff, then how can you turn around and police what happens in people's homes? So that was concerning in some of the policy that I read. I was unable to find anywhere that it said in policies from the Department of Ed, West Virginia Code, or county policy that those videos couldn't be used. And if such policy exists, of course, I'd love to hear about it, and I'd also like to see about changing it because I think that that's inappropriate, that that can't be used to protect the most vulnerable students that can't tell us what's going on in those rooms.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie Riley. Do we need an executive session?
No. I was wanting to speak today, bring to the board's attention. I know there has been some issues within my child's class and the teachers. And I believe the way that it is being handled, especially after I know investigations have been done and said teachers and other members of the Board of Ed have been out, that they're still allowing the harassment to continue. Because it's not just affecting another parent's child, they're affecting the whole class and my child. Where the children thrive on consistency and routine, when you're having subs in and out of the classroom, different people, they're not able to learn. And where we have worked hard to get to the place we are now, it's causing behavioral regression, issues in the classroom, learning issues. It's hard enough for a child who is not special needs to learn whenever you have different teachers and aides and subs in and out of the room because everybody teaches differently, everybody learns differently. And when, especially for special needs kids, whenever you're changing who is in and out of the room constantly, there is no consistency, there is no routine, and you're making it harder for them. And whenever everything's been investigated and nothing has been wrong, and you're allowing it to continue happening, you're not looking out for your staff and you're not looking out for the special needs kids who you guys have got this job for to look out for them. And if you guys aren't looking out for them, then who is? If you're allowing that to continue to happen, you're creating problems where there shouldn't be any. And staff is quitting because of the issues whenever you're not backing them. People who have gone above and beyond and went out of their way for kids and students who want that job. Now you're making jobs that nobody wants because of the issues that are allowing to continue. And you're making it harder for the special needs kids to thrive and learn when you're constantly changing that. And then you get people in those jobs who don't want that job, who are just there for a paycheck. Who doesn't care about those kids? And I think that really needs to be looked at instead of letting the issues continue. If it's done, the investigation's been done, nothing's wrong, then it needs to be dropped and something needs to be done to be backing your staff. Because it's not just affecting the staff, it's not affecting them, it's affecting the children and the way they learn and their health and safety. Whenever I'm having to be called to come get my child from school because she's having such a meltdown because of all the changes and the issues, that's a problem. Because it went from where I was having to go to the school every day or every other day because of it, to where I haven't had to go at all. And then when all this started, it started to where I had to go. I had to go pick her up from school because she's not just a safety risk for herself, she's a safety risk for the staff because of the inconsistency and what you guys are allowing. And I think that really needs to be looked at. And if you guys are just here for the money, then I think you need to find another profession. If you're not willing to back the kids and put your heart into it and support the kids and your staff to make a better place for them. Because the part of the job that you signed up for is to protect the children, and I think right now you guys aren't doing a very good job. I think more needs to be done. And that's all I got to say about it.
Thank you. Next, we have approved minutes from the following board meetings. Our regular meeting on April 22nd, our regular meeting on May the 6th. They're square in our packet, page is 13324. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Adam moved, John seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. We have a consent agenda. Out-of-state meeting request, Cynthia Nesselroon at Janie Hawkins, Child Nutrition Annual Conference, Boston Convention Center, Massachusetts, July 13th through the 16th of 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Adam's moved, Dave seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, for the point of clarification. How are we funding this trip?
My understanding is it's coming from Child Nutrition Conference.
So it's not coming out of county coffers?
Right.
Okay. And then the time, the time that they're going to have to be away? And then the time, the time that they're gonna have to be away, is that PTO time or is that?
It'll be professional leave time.
Professional leave time?
I have one question. How's this gonna help our kids' meals?
I've not seen the agenda for the conference. Typically, they travel to these to get new ideas to bring back.
Okay. Just checking.
I'd also like to see a report when they get back from what they did learn. I know sometimes we don't give reports when they go to some of these things. Sometimes we do. But if we can get a report. I also agree with John there. I think it does need to be looked into about the meals and the meals for students.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have approved payment of bills and the payroll in the amount of $2,652,846.92. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Adam has moved, Dave has seconded. Any discussion? I think we just need to be sure we get our P cards caught up. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. And we have to approve the monthly financial report for April 2024. And that was... We posed separately. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
John has moved.
Second.
Dave has seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, so if you all don't wanna have copies of that, correct?
Did yours not make it in the mail?
No.
Uh...
No.
Okay.
But I got it on the phone.
Yeah, it came in the, attached to the agenda.
Yeah.
In the email.
Okay, yeah, now can I go?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Then we also have budget journal entries that we need to approve for... Number three is approve the following budget journal entries. Four dash 1,001, Teacher Leadership Grant. Four dash 1,002, Correcting Coding Errors for Salaries. Four dash 1,003, State Matching Grant for the Child Nutrition. Four dash 1,004, Budget Transfers to Correct Negative Line Items. Four dash 1,005, Budget Reallocation for Dues and Fees Line Item. Four dash 1,006, Update PEIA Allocation Budget for the West Virginia Department of Education. And four dash 1,007, Update State Aid Budget to Match Schedule per the West Virginia Department of Education. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I got three. I heard Dave first. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have personnel.
Okay, on the superintendent's recommendation, please accept the following reservations or retirements. One, A, Susan Silski, Resignation Substitute Teacher, Lewis County Schools, effective June 30, 2024. B, Allison Hill, Resignation Preschool Teacher, Preschool Special Needs Teacher, Roanoke Elementary School, effective June 30, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
John has moved, Mike has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero.
Number two, please consider and approve the following requests. A, Permission to Post a Professional Extracurricular Position for Board Meeting Broadcasting Facilitator for, effective July 1 of 2024. And B, Jody Masters, Recent Higher E-CAD Aid at Peterson Central Elementary School, from posting six, excuse me, posting 369 from the May 2024 Board Meeting. There was a frontline error caused that.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Second.
Dave has moved, Adam has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Three, please employ the following professional personnel. J, Casey Byers, Kindergarten Classroom Teacher, Janeway Elementary School, effective for the 24-25 school year. K, William Bolinger, Special Education Teacher, Lewis County High School, effective for the 24-25 school year.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
John has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero.
Please employ, or four, please employ the following service personnel. G, Sharon Bennett, E-CAD Aid, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective for the 24-25 school year.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mike has moved, John has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero.
We'll move to section nine. Please employ the following summer school personnel. A, Natalie Kissam, Elementary School Principal, Lewis County Schools, effective June 12, 2024. C, Cass, Cassidy Rittenhouse, Casey Rittenhouse, excuse me, School Nurse, Lewis County Schools, effective June 20, June 12, 2024. D, Sandra Blake, Cafeteria Manager, Lewis County High School, June 12, 2024. E, Kimberly Wilcox, Cafeteria Manager slash Cook, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective June 12, 2024. I, Marcia James, School Counselor, Secondary, Lewis County High School, effective June 12, 2024. J, Lawrence Lance, School Counselor, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective June 12, 2024. K, Michael Smith and Deborah Gump, as two of the Credit Recovery Teachers for Lewis County High School, effective June 12, 2024. L, Cheryl Reaming, Credit Recovery Special Education Teacher, Lewis County High School, effective June 12, 2024. M, Randall DeVores, Special Education Severer and Profound Teacher, Lewis County High School, effective June 12, 2024. N, Evelyn Riffle, One of Two Special Education Aides, Lewis County High School, effective June 12, 2024. Q, Laura Davis, One of Two Special Education Teachers for Robert Land Mill School, effective for the... That should not say effective, that should say effective June 12, excuse me. That is a summer school position. W, Christopher Ware and Amanda Young, Two Elementary Special Education Teachers, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective June 12, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Adam's moved, John seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Do we have any facilities or construction updates?
Yes. Sorry, Mike, I forgot. So, the HVAC, the HVAC project at Robert Land Mill School has been going on for all years, still on schedule for its August 24 completion date. The two safe schools entry projects that we have at Peterson Central and Roanoke Elementary are nearing completion and they're slightly ahead of their scheduled completion date. We're kind of late about that as well. I know Dr. Stewart has told you we will be starting three additional SBA projects in the near future. We have a HVAC replacement at Lewis County High School. We have a Skylight replacement at Roanoke Elementary and a partial HVAC replacement at Peterson. And that is all in thanks to the West Virginia School Building Authority, something I'm not sure how we locally would have ever funded. And at this moment, as of 6:00, 6:30, Roanoke is still out of power. I'm waiting on another call around 8:30 to see what the status is gonna be, but the generator at that school is running.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have consider and approve architectural firm for the school building authority projects at Lewis County High School, Roanoke and Peterson Central Elementary Schools. And we have that here. Are Architectural Services being proposed? Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
Adam's moved, John has seconded. It's for Williamson Schreiber. Mike, I'm not sure you would have that. But they have done work for us before and are very familiar with all of our facilities. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have consider and approve the Lewis County High School Girls Basketball Team to Charleston, South Carolina, December 27th through 30th, 2024, at no cost to the board. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave has seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Then we have consider and approve the math textbook adoption for the 2024-2025 school year. And that's a single sheet here. Is there a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Discussion? Your textbooks are just crazy expensive. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have, I had our second review of the following policies. 0100, Definitions. 1240, Evaluation of the Superintendent. 2432, Driver Education. 2452, Extended Learning Opportunities. 3120.08, Employment of Personnel for Extracurricular Activities. 3120.11, Athletic Trainer. 3122.01, Drug-Free Workplace. 3531, Unauthorized Work Stoppage. 4115, Job Descriptions. 4120.4, Employment of Substitutes. 4120.8, Employment of Personnel for Extracurricular Activities. 4122.01, Drug-Free Workplace. 4125, Competency Testing for Service Personnel. 4242, Service Personnel Staff Development. 4531, Unauthorized Work Stoppage. 5111, Eligibility of Resident/Non-Resident Students for Enrollment. 5112, Entrance Requirements. 5113, Open Enrollment for Non-Resident Students. 5130, Withdrawal from School. 5140, Motor Vehicle Driver's License Restrictions. 5200, Attendance. 5330, Use of Medications. 5330.O2, Self-Administrated Medication and Epinephrine Use. 5331, Administration of Opioid Antagonists. 5335, Care of Students with Chronic Health Conditions. 5500, Student Code of Conduct. 5600, Student Discipline. 6114, Cost Principles Spending Federal Funds. 6320, Purchases. 6520, Payroll Deductions. 6800, System of Accounting. 7450, Property Inventory. 7455, Accounting System for Capital Assets. 8340, Letters of Reference. 8405.01, Indoor Air Quality. 8600.04, Bus Operator Certification. 9270, Home Instruction. 9505, Charger Schools. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
John has moved, Adam has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have consider and approve the memorandum of agreement between the Lewis County Board of Education and Communities and Schools for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Dave has moved, John has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Consider and approve cooperative agreement between the Lewis County Board of Education and the Camden Onvolley Medical Center for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mike has moved, John has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. Consider and approve contract for services between Lewis County Board of Education and Sharon Pickney, Autism Specialist, Doing Business as Behavior Matters, for the 2023-2024 school year, not to exceed 25,000. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved.
I'll second.
Dave has seconded. Discussion? Should it be this present school year?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five zero. We have our Use of Buildings and Grounds Report in the back of our packet on pages 201 through 204. Dr. Stewart? Updates?
Not a whole lot, other than we are nearing the end of the school year. Tomorrow will be our last day with students and staff will finish up this week. So, we wanna make sure that we say a great big thank you to our staff for all that they've done this year. I know it's been challenging at times, but I think it's been a successful year. The other thing that I wanna comment on is I wanna give a shout out to the high school for, as they refer to it, "The biggest show in town", happened on Friday of last week and so graduation went off without a hitch and I think they did a stand-up job in honoring our kiddos, so.
Okay. Board comments, Mike?
No, I had nothing to say. The only thing I do have, oh, I do have one thing. I do wanna congratulate all, hate to see them, you know, a lot of the people go. That was the teacher, service personnel. We hate to see them go. I've worked with a lot of them. I wish them all the best.
Okay. Adam?
Yes, ma'am. I guess it would have been last Tuesday. Peterson Central had a fifth grade night out and I thought it was phenomenal. It was an after-school event where all the fifth graders, or many of the fifth graders, would show up and the teachers would be present. They had PlayStations and educational, I don't know, exhibits, if you will. And I really have to say that the teachers did a phenomenal job. There were volunteers there, private contribution, the students. It was truly impressive and credit to them for that. And the second thing, if we could, this is another positive note. I had the opportunity to talk to Mrs. Reaming at graduation and she shared a story about Western Young graduates, Josh Western graduates. I'd love to get her on the agenda to share that story with everybody and it'll really reach home and give a pretty good impression of what that program was doing. And I gotta say, I'm very proud of those students and what's happened up there. That's all I have.
Okay. John?
I got to attend Mr. Loudon's first spring concert and I think the guy could kick a bucket down the road and make it sound like music. It was very enjoyable. Also, I wanna thank the retirees for all your service to the school system. Through the good times he'd been through, a lot, we appreciate it. And the stuff to replace you, it's not easy. Again, we wanna thank you for all your hard work and what you've done for our kids and our school system and can't thank you enough.
Dave?
Okay, yes, I also wanna thank the retirees. I was there 10 years ago and I hope, I hope to see you all active in the community, involved in the community, whether it's the school system or outside the school system. But stay active and contribute to Lewis County as much as you can or the communities you're from. I think it keeps you young to be involved. I wanna congratulate the graduates at Lewis County High School. Things went well. Keep hoping they'll get it down to under an hour, but they haven't done it yet. But that's tough. But it went very well. I was impressed with the behavior of our kids and I was impressed with the behavior of the crowd. And again, congrats to all the graduates. Also, want to offer condolence... Also, want to offer condolences to the family of Aaron Rackl. Aaron is one of our employees here at the county office and his father passed away. And so, last week, they racked him. So, I just want to offer our condolences to him.
Well, you guys have hit it all. Congratulations to the retirees. You will be missed. You are hard to replace. Thank you for your hard work. I went to the high school band concert and Mr. Heath had them boogying right along very well.
They were kicking it good, too.
And, yeah, and graduation was appropriate as a significant milestone. And we didn't sweat quite as bad as I was afraid we were going to with our HVAC problems out there. But at any rate, our next meeting will be June the 10th at 6:00 PM here at the Administration Building. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Adam has moved, John has seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. It is...